Just because I know you're in the meeting. I like your little office hallway thing. Oh, I sent you an email earlier today.
Oh, I see.
Okay. I was walking downtown to get some feedback yesterday. I just wanted to let you know where we're sitting.
Oh, thank you. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I've been looking from home.
Well, I kind of figured there was a chance.
Yes. Oh, that's great. But yeah, it's a great, it's a great building. I, and our landlord's really done so much to improve, like, he's just like, like maybe exposed brick. He used to just ooze weird things.
Seventies wall panel.
Yeah, but it's just, he's done such a great job too. It's the same person that owns the ranch, that Keon, that holds the stress. Uh, Brett, I'm here. B W E I R P.
Mayor, I, oh, I was like, where's, I know I saw her.
Everybody here?
He blends into the bricks and stuff.
And I believe all council members are here. I'm going to call the study session for the city of Holland, city council to order. One thing, a couple of things I wanted to make note of. I noticed out my window, there are a large number of people that are outside. Would, and my assumption is that, that some of those folks are going to be interested in making public comment here by coming in and coming out. It is much cooler and much nicer here inside the building. So I would ask that we all be courteous to those folks that are outside and those of us who are enjoying the comfort of the air conditioning inside. If we could defer until the folks outside are done making public comments, we've got a way for them to be able to move in, come in and come out. Oh, I'm getting a note that there's not anybody outside at the moment who's waiting to make public comments. So that's a good thing. Also, thank, thank you to everyone for wearing masks. Thank you for engaging in good social distancing. It is one of our, our concerns and our obligations as a city council to provide for the safety and health of all of the members of the community. And also especially to our staff that is here today that needs to be at the meeting and council members. So thank you for adhering to those rules and wearing masks and maintaining social distancing. We are going to start with public comment this evening. We are going to, because this is a study session, it is limited to three minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me, a green light, a yellow light and a red light. The green light means that you're doing okay on time. The yellow light means you just have one minute left and the red light means that your time has expired and we are very strict about that. Also because of the large number of comments that we may be anticipating, please also be respectful if that, if your statement has been made. Obviously, anyone who wants to speak can speak. But if we're hearing the same things over and over again, that may not be the most productive use of council's time. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to be able to discuss these issues and, and to do that in a timely manner. But, but if you have something that you do want to say, please do that. Now, having said that, I will open up the meeting to public comment. This will be the only public comment period during the meeting. Also, please note that this is a one-way communication. We will not be answering questions. You will be speaking to us. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi.
Yes. Certainly.
We also have a policy that there is no reaction from the group, positive or negative. This is a neutral meeting and we ask that you respect that also. Okay? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chouy. I'm sorry. Please state your name and address for the record again.
Sure. My name is Sarah Van Tongren and my work address is 222 South River Avenue. I'm a mental health therapist that lives and works in the city of Holland. It's a well-known fact that Holland is underserved when it comes to mental health providers. We do not have enough therapists living and working in our city for the growing need that we have. Many therapists carry waitlists that can be months long. Three years ago, I received a phone call from another mental health therapist living on the east coast, looking to move to the city of Holland. She had an elderly mother here and she was raised here, but she was considering moving back to Holland to care for this elderly mother. This therapist was concerned because she was gay and married to a woman, she wouldn't be able to secure housing for herself and her wife, would not be able to find a landlord that would rent to her so she could open her small business, a therapy office, and would not be able to be welcomed into the city. She ultimately decided not to move to Holland, but instead to move her mother to the east coast. The Holland lost out on having another therapist, an upstanding citizen and the citizenship of her mother. Is this what we want to be known as? We, as a city, what we have written in our ordinances represent the value of its citizens and says who Holland is for those looking to move and work in our city. Every time someone enters the city of Holland, there's a sign that says, "Welcome to Holland." And it's been said, being welcoming is a value of Holland. But in reality, Holland continues to allow discrimination of housing for LGBTQ individuals and does not have an ordinance that protects women, the elderly, people of color and those with religious differences when it comes to employment. These are basic human rights. We are talking about housing and employment and that is it. Currently, there's forty cities and townships in Michigan that have comprehensive protections that include housing and employment. And that is including the LGBTQ citizens. The current Michigan Civil Rights Commission interprets Elliot Larson's Civil Rights Act of 1976 to include sexual orientation and gender identity. By Holland expanding its nondiscrimination ordinance and including sexual orientation and gender identity, we are making clear that LGBTQ neighbors are protected against discrimination and we're better aligning with the Michigan Civil Rights Commission and federal law. Local government's goal is to provide for the health, well-being and safety of its community. Establishing ordinances, especially when backed by federal law, allows citizens a process that exists in their city to get help at the state level. By making this ordinance and not a policy, it shows that the city of Holland is committed to all of its citizens. In order for people to live here, they need to be able to work here. LGBTQ people, people of color, women, the elderly, these are our neighbors, our friends, our coworkers in Holland. And all we are asking for is that we get to live here and work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, and thank you, City Manager Vinbeek, for sanitizing the podium in between each one of the speakers. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Sorenson and I am the Director of Out on the Lakeshore at 451 Columbia Avenue. You may recall that my colleagues and I were here on December 18th and asked that the ordinance be amended to include sexual orientation and gender identity along with employment protections for the nondiscrimination ordinance. And of course, I have to thank Mr. Chouy for his motion that was made in January to continue that process and to look at the options. Unfortunately, the March 25th study session was postponed and while it was unfortunate, it was necessary with COVID-19. And I think I speak for the majority when I say that we agree that it was necessary for the health and the safety of our community and all involved. But I don't have to speak for anyone when I say that we've waited long enough and it's time. I say that I don't have to speak for anyone because the community's already spoken. Over the last couple of weeks, we distributed this letter to people who live and work in Holland and asked for their support in the form of a signature. The letter states, "Mayor Box and members of city council, we, the community of Holland, respectfully request that the following actions be taken by the city council in order to ensure the rights of all members of our community. Number one, to create an ordinance to ensure nondiscrimination and fair employment practices for all individuals regardless of religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or marital status. And number two, to add sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of persons insured to receive fair housing protections in addition to already existing protections based on religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, marital status or source of income. We believe that the protections of all individuals as it relates to housing and employment is a necessary component to a healthy and vibrant community because we all get to live and work here, respectfully signed by 660 members of the Holland community who either work or live here." So I think this letter and its signatures, along with those who are here to support tonight, both in this room and along River Avenue, speaks for itself. And it speaks volumes and I hope you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
And I do have a full copy of the letters that I'll give to the clerk along with an individual copy for each of you that has a list of all who signed.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Owen Beard and my address is 194 West 11th Street. I was born in Holland. I have lived in my home in the historic district for all of my 20 years. I grew up walking a third or fourth church on Sundays and walking downtown to watch the Tulip time parade every spring. I graduated from Holland High School in 2018 and I am now studying social work after my second year at Hope College. I am about as Holland, Michigan as they come. I know this town extremely well and I love it deeply, yet I'm still unsure if it truly loves me back. I always knew I was different from the teammates on my soccer team. I seem to be the only one bothered by their hurtful words and jokes about gay people. I told myself that the only reason it made me uncomfortable was because I was too sensitive. It wasn't until recently that I realized it bothered me so much because they were talking about me, even if they didn't know it. I prayed and pleaded for these feelings to go away. My family had always taught me that people in the LGBTQ community deserve the same love and respect as anyone else and I can honestly say I always believed that. But if it was me who was gay, that was different. I heard gay used far too many times as an insult from both my peers and adult role models to truly believe that it was okay for me to be attracted to men. I am luckier than most who are part of this oppressed community. Since recently coming out, I have met, I've been met with allies and immense support from family, from friends, from certain pockets of Hope College and even from some people whom I wasn't expecting. Most of these allies come from Holland. Some still live here, some have moved away. Yet despite the support, I think it's important to say how alone I have felt for many years and still often feel today. I have always valued the comfort and safety that this town offered me, though unfortunately, I knew that if I came out, this place that had always made me feel so safe and secure, wouldn't necessarily remain that way for me because of this one part of me. Like I said before, I love this town. It will always be a part of me whether I'm physically here or not. And that is why I'm here today. For too long, people in this town have only felt safe if they fit into an extremely rigid category. I believe and hope this will change. I believe that adding sexual orientation, gender identity to housing protection while creating employment protections for all groups will be a monumental step to change this. So, members of council, I ask you to value the people of this town that don't necessarily fit what is normal. I ask you to value that kid on the soccer team who tells himself he is too sensitive. I can promise you there are more of us than you may realize. People who love Holland but are hiding themselves because they just aren't quite sure that Holland will love them back. I ask you to show them that they are loved and valued here for exactly who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Alina Chavis. My work address is 729 Lincoln. I spoke to all of you in the fall as well. I came back again with a similar request this time, but this time I'm a formal Holland City resident. I teach at Hope. I have a therapy office on the south side and now I am a south side resident. Why? Why did we move? Because it's exhausting being the only. My children, five children, at four different schools were the only black children in their classrooms. They had never had a black teacher. They had only seen one black janitor. My children were exhausted. Exhausted of being teased, being the butts of jokes, being excluded, never being invited to people's homes or to birthday parties or to their table. Tired of any behavior being scrutinized more than their white peers and tired of heads turning to them every time a topic of diversity was discussed in class. They were tired. So we moved. We pulled our children out of West Ottawa schools, which although is 40% free and reduced lunch, has a minuscule African-American population. And my children will now attend Holland Public Schools this fall. My experience is a sliver of the discrimination my African-American husband has faced as a black man in jobs, in classrooms and on the streets of Holland every day. But as a black woman with a white mother, I have privileges. This colorism that the society offers has afforded me less discrimination than my children or spouse. Being lighter has given me space to speak. My PhD awards me respect and listening ears. But what if I didn't? What if I didn't have the resources to move my entire family of seven people across town? Or to write letters to administration when my child was being verbally abused by a coach? What if I didn't have friends in high places? What if I didn't have dear friends and family who financially helped us hire an attorney so that my husband could complete his OT degree and become an outstanding occupational therapist aiding patients with neurological injuries now? What if nobody was there to protect my family? I don't want to ask these questions anymore, Holland. I'm tired. I'm tired of fighting for my gay and transgendered clients. I'm tired of fighting for my gay and transgendered friends. I'm tired of having to fight for equality in this town. I'm tired of fighting for my family. I'm tired of having to protest, to speak, to stand up and to say when something's wrong or unjust and to do this loudly because other allies are not speaking. But today I speak to you with hope, with feeling support from allies and to you with optimism because you're a group that has willingly listened and now will hopefully willingly act. Protect us. Make this real. There is no reason that all citizens of Holland shouldn't be able to feel safe. Please step up and do the right thing. And now that I'm a south sider, I can vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Alina. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
So my name is Krista Anderson. My address is 323 West 30th Street. And I'm going to ask you to please verbally tell me when the green light is on and then also verbally tell me when it turns yellow, please.
We will have the city manager do that for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. It's green.
My name is Krista Anderson. I use she/her pronouns. I am a doctoral-level clinical psychologist practicing in the city of Holland for over 20 years. I am also a straight cisgender female, mother of two teenage boys, and I happen to be legally blind. I'm speaking today to share some of my experiences as facilitator of Gender Safe. Gender Safe, supporting all for equality, is a support group here in Holland for the transgender community as well as their family, friends and allies. Gender Safe was started almost five years ago as an offshoot of PFLAG. As a gender-affirming psychologist, I was asked to facilitate and I couldn't be more grateful. Our group has grown from meeting hourly, once a month, with six to eight people participating, to meeting twice monthly for two hours, averaging 20 in attendance each group. Throughout COVID-19, we have met virtually twice weekly to provide ongoing support. Our Gender Safe community has also organized two well-attended and powerful transgender Day of Remembrance candlelight vigils, has become a strong presence at Pride and we've been able to educate and advocate to many individuals and families with our groups, special programming and social media. I share all of this with you because it is important to know that the trans community is all around you in Holland. Although many are experiencing more acceptance, inclusion and affirmation, discrimination is still happening. It's heartbreaking to hear stories such as one individual who has, had the courage to come out at work. And although he wasn't fired, he is consistently misgendered and called the wrong name. Many share stories of living two lives because they are too afraid to come out at work and risk losing their job. Therefore, all of these folks live at work not being seen and known as who they are, as who they authentically are. I have no way of understanding what that is like. However, as a blind person, I have recently needed additional accommodations to do my job successfully.
That's one minute left. Sorry to interrupt.
Fortunately, my employer, thank you, has followed the federal ADA to ensure this is happening. However, as things stand now in Holland, I have no local process in place to assist me if I did not have a fully supportive employer. What do I feel and what do trans folks feel when facing the reality of not having local protections? I'll tell you, we feel afraid. We feel less than. We feel insignificant, non-seen, respected, valued and accepted as who we are. Please see the LGBTQ people for the amazing people they are and for all the gifts they bring to businesses and to the community of Holland. Help them know they do not need to be afraid to be their authentic selves. Help others who come to Holland to know that we are an open and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Corey Eklov and my address is 5484 Lakeshore. I'm an internal medicine physician and I was asked today to speak by a patient who's part of a minority group as an advocate for her and her rights and for my patients that belong to other minority groups and their rights. I've lived and worked in Holland for the past 10 years and my three boys go to school at Black River Public School. Since I have moved to Holland, I have really found it to be a warm and welcoming home. But I know that not everyone has had that experience. I'm speaking tonight to ask the city council to create employment protection for everyone and to, as been asked by many others, include gender identity and sexual orientation in the fair housing protections. I want to add to this discussion within my area of expertise and I can certainly speak to the physical and mental health implications of discrimination and lack of anti-discrimination policies from the citizens of Holland. Part of the curriculum we learn in modern medical education is the impact of race, sex, ethnicity, national origin, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation and gender identity on health and on healthcare access. These factors are such an important part of health that they're included right alongside our studies in anatomy and pathophysiology. It's an accepted fact in the medical community that discrimination creates inequalities and we see it play out today in affecting minority groups in things like the COVID-19 rates among African-American Hispanic population. Discrimination against LGBTQ persons has been associated with high rates of psychiatric disorders, substance abuse and even suicide. Many elderly LGBTQ persons I care for are faced with a life of isolation in their end-of-life years because they have faced personal and professional discrimination, making it difficult for them to have long-term relationships in families during their working years. Minority patients are overall less likely to have consistent access to healthcare for preventive services such as cancer screening or for management of their chronic diseases. I don't have a pill or a treatment that I can use to fix isolation and loneliness and job insecurity and the depression and the anxiety that come from hiding or denying your identity and fighting constantly for the same rights and opportunities as others. If the city of Holland fails to explicitly prohibit discrimination against minority residents and employees, then the city of Holland is implicitly allowing it. I'm proud to care for patients that live and work in Holland and I'm proud to raise children here in Holland. And I want to ask you tonight to create protections for the citizens that are most vulnerable to discrimination so that everyone can have the opportunity that I've had to live and work here. It's no exaggeration, in my opinion, to say that equality truly is a life and death matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, I'm Lori Burkholtz and I have an office on 11971 James Street in Holland. I remember the day I became a doctor and swore the Hippocratic oath. The oath is sacred for physicians and amongst other things at a high level says, "We promise to treat the ill to the best of our ability, everyone without exception." Needing to stand and explain to anybody why that's an important philosophy for everyone to me is really an unfortunate instance. I have two young children and recently had a discussion with them about discrimination. They didn't know what the word meant. And so I explained to them by giving examples of friends and family members who have been discriminated against. And they looked at me sort of shocked, not quite understanding why somebody would treat Mr. Steve and Mr. Eric differently, how it would be that they wouldn't want them to be their neighbor or wouldn't allow them to purchase a home. The lack of access to adequate housing, employment and all of the things we've heard about is truly a public health crisis. The effects on mental health, I think, are exemplified when we think about a study that has looked at what the likelihood of a heterosexual versus a gay or lesbian man or woman versus transgender percent of likelihood that they have thought about suicide. And we know that that number is two to 15 times higher in these oppressed individuals. So I'm not going to go on and describe all of the things I had planned because Dr. Eklov spoke of them. But this truly is a public health crisis. It is a right to have access to adequate housing and fair and equal employment. I'm here to advocate for all of my patients because I took an oath that said I would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Counsel, the fact that I, my name is Cassie Krieger, Cassandra Krieger. I am legitimately fearful to disclose my address, but I will. And that speaks volumes to this discussion. My address is 760 West 32nd Street. I authentically thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have read the submissions that you've all received via the comments regarding this topic and I'm very encouraged. The grand minority of those that submitted emails to you are of the mindset of wanting the discriminatory practices of this city to persist. As a faithful Christian and ruling elder of First Presbyterian Church, I too share the convictions and joys through the blessings of our Lord Jesus Christ. For 15 years, I have shared this life with the most amazing wife any one person could dream of. We have two young children, three and five years old, which we raise to love all persons, to be good people and to fight for those less fortunate. Recently, we've had a swim school inform us that the religious convictions of some of the instructions are more important than teaching my children how to be safe in water. This comes two days after a family said goodbye to their child of similar age. I'm sorry. I apologize for my emotion. My children are innocent. They love the water. And we want them to be safe. However, because my wife and I are their mothers, they were refused the benefit of being taught how to safely enjoy this activity. Had I lied on the registration form and only put one of us and denied who we are, there would be no problem. They would not have asked us why we were a single-parent household. They could have been supporting children of divorce or adultery, something, you know, non-Christian. If a business wants to limit their services, they need to be crystal clear about who they do and do not serve in order to allow for responsible consumerism. I would never knowingly subject my children to such hatred and discrimination. I too protect my children, just like any other loving parent. I have been denied the adoption of a dog because of who I love. I have risked my employment and live every day knowing that if I do not own my home... I have risked my employment and live every day knowing that if I do not own my home, I could be evicted for the same love that heterosexual people fearlessly enjoy. This ordinance is not about special protections for the LGBTQIA people. It is about protections for all people. People should not live in fear, to be honest, about who they are. It's hard enough to be-
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
I'm sorry, Cassie, your time has expired.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Jen Adams. I'm a clergy person at Grace Episcopal Church, 55 Michigan Avenue, founding member and chair of the board at Out on the Lakeshore, 536 Lincoln Avenue. I've spoken to you several times on the topic of amending the city's NDO over the past 10 years. I'm grateful for the thorough way in which you are now approaching amendments that pertain to housing and employment, too. I also appreciate that these amendments being considered are about many different groups of people. LGBTQ people and their families are included, but these proposals are much broader and I'm glad. This moment is about showing care for many people who have found themselves on the margins of this community due to race, national origin, color, disability, education, family status, sexual orientation, gender expression, gender identity, marital status, religion, other reasons, too, which makes this a huge opportunity for the city to make a strong clarification, taking steps beyond the words "celebrating diversity" into actions which will help us live in to that aspiration. I know there are people who, for several reasons, want you to be afraid of taking these steps. I'm here to say, don't be afraid of taking these steps, which will simply serve to protect a wide range of your neighbors and mine, too. The processes required to implement these changes are minimal, as it says in the documents which the city manager shared. What you would engage is simply a referral process to either the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan or the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. Don't be afraid that these amendments would lead to an overly burdensome process at City Hall. These actions would simply open doors at the local level for those whose circumstances need those doors accessible to them. Second, don't be afraid that these actions will limit religious freedoms. I obviously value freedom of religion. My job, my livelihood depend on them. There is language worked into these documents. Exemptions are included. You've protected everyone you possibly can as you consider these steps. Finally, don't be afraid to help our community learn to not be afraid of each other. This is a moment in which our region, our world, is crying out for those kinds of lessons. In conversations around this, you might hear the phrase "religious freedoms" used to justify unfair treatment rather than to help create an environment in which neighbors are respected, treated, and even loved.
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Jen, your time has expired.
This is an opportunity to make a strong statement. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to address counsel?
Bob Ashby, 967 Songbird Lane. For some reason, this renewed effort jumped almost immediately into liabilities and ordinance language without a process of vetting as the need. Presently, the questions being asked seem to be, what will happen if Holland does or does not institute special protections for LGBTQ community, and they are special protections, and simultaneously, what should the protection language look like? This is without answering the first question first. Secondly, like 10 years ago, the council is asking questions about liabilities and language, but this time without having asked the questions concerning the justification for the liabilities themselves, let alone examining supposed language requirements. The question should be, are formulations of proposed ordinance language and fears of liabilities justified in our community or as a matter of current conditions at all? How can liability exist when, as I pointed out last week, everything has already been granted to the gay community? Finally, there seems to be an assumption that there is a lack of advocacy for the LGBTQ plus community. Now, that would require legal remedy. The assumption is a wrong assumption and also prompts an erroneous, seemingly spontaneous question, again, about language and liabilities. The fact of the matter is that Holland has blossomed a prolific pro-gay brand advocacy culture to the point of having multiple organizations, witness to tonight, and mostly pro-gay human relations committee, and a brand-new annual gay rights celebration. The fact that any anecdotal claims by members of the gay community about fears and rejections in Holland are a matter of personal perception and not reality. We are asking the wrong questions tonight. Are we now at the point that government wields its authority on the basis of perceptions, feelings, and unverified anecdote? The proper question should be, especially given everything above, are the real targets for the movement the rights of private citizens and nonprofits, businesses owned but operated by Christians such as florists and bakers and private schools and conservative schools with values? If the answer is even possibly yes, we have no business doing what we're doing here tonight. As I have already said, there is simply nothing legally, culturally, or ethically left to do as a matter of public policy or legal remedy.
Thank you, Bob. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. My name is Jen Greenlee and I live in North Holland. My understanding was that on March 25th, the city attorney and the city manager were going to come with their research and present to all of us information that they would have gleaned in regards to possible ordinance or policy or what's out there in relation to what other places have already implemented. And I know it's not really fair for us to be speaking right now without having that be presented, and I understand it's going to be presented today, but it makes sense that after it's been presented that we all have time to take a look at the recommendations from what the city manager and attorney have gleaned and put together before you make a vote. It makes sense, we need to have time to look at it. And if it's going to be an ordinance or a policy or something different, we really have no clue because we're not informed yet. And so I thank you for your integrity, for honoring your word, and presenting to the public what we need to know before you can make a decision to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Anne Hundrickson, 338 Royal Park Drive, Zealand. A lot of people wonder why I keep coming into your business. Well, I would say that I am representing the faith community in Holland. And that being said, by my faith and my biblical knowledge, I do not believe that marriage is between, I do believe that marriage is between one man and one woman. Now, does that mean I'm against anybody else? I have absolutely loved my daughter, who is transgendered and married to a wife. She and I have a wonderful relationship. She honors my faith. This isn't a matter of us and them. And the pleas that we have heard here today are exactly what we heard in 2011. And I would really, really like to see this stop and I'm fearful of an ordinance that is really going to say strongly "us and them." That being said, that really violates the word of God that I believe in. And so I'm sorry that we've come to this place, that it has to be forced upon us to love one another in this community and that it has to be said that you, because you don't believe what I believe, then you must hate me. It's not so. This community has changed and it has, it's really disturbing to me. I have spoken here with dignity and with what I believe is right as far as the religious community and/or the faith-based community. I stand strong for it. I will not deny what I think, but on the other hand, I feel that it is being imposed upon me now that if I don't agree with this and don't go forward with an attitude of love towards everybody, then I'm discriminated against. Be careful what you're voting for because there's going to be another group that's going to be marginalized from this.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time?
Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. For those who may have taken a look at the agenda online, it states that the correspondence received was 30. There was a cutoff point this afternoon where we did have to stop putting them as part of the agenda. If your correspondence came in through our email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com, it will be included in the record. Next week is when, during our regular council meeting, is when we make decisions and when we will accept those into the record. So if there are additional public comments that people would like to make, they can still make those to publiccomment@cityofholland.com. And the 30 that are here and any additional ones that may be received will also be included in that as well. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Van Beek, in regard to presentation of options for city council to consider regarding a proposed protections against discrimination as we requested.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My role in the meeting is relatively brief this evening. Please don't clap for that either, counsel. Really, as directed, the city attorney and myself did take a look at various options that we would bring forward to you without recommendation. And Ron, I am fully trusting will do a great job of presenting two of those types of options. And specifically, I'd just like to say, he probably highlighted this, but really, much of it is modeled after the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, which had a model ordinance. When we took a look at it, it didn't take us long to kind of decide that it didn't make a lot of sense for us to write something new, but to build that as kind of a model ordinance that would give you various options to then deliberate and discuss. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to our city attorney, Ron Vanderveen, with my appreciation for doing a lot of great work in this area. Thank you.
I see my display is up on the screen over here. I'm not sure if everybody else can see it. Is it on your monitors?
No.
It's on some, Matt.
It's on some of them, not on all of them.
Okay.
So that may actually be an issue with Apple products. They block to multiple VGA outputs. So we'll flip this screen around so the council can see it.
Okay.
So we should be putting in a call to Steve Jobs? Is that what you're saying, Matt?
And possibly.
If you can get a response, I'd like to be in on that conversation. I'm sorry, that's right. He's not able, it's Tim Cook.
You could call Matt's email and then he can get caught up. He'll plug in and then we can put it on.
Yeah, actually, it won't show very well.
Is the other one turned on? The other monitor?
I think we have the same problem there, so.
Yeah. I think, was it on the one down here?
Man, I wondered if he could send it as an attachment email to you. Do you have a moment to do that, Ron?
I can, I could probably send it as an attachment, sure. Let me do that.
We'll give you, we'll give you a couple of minutes to do that, Ron, so that we make sure that we've got as much ability to be able to see this as possible.
And the mayor has volunteered to sing and dance for us while we wait.
If that doesn't put people to sleep, I don't know what will. I do, I take requests. Also, just for, for people's identification here and those who may be watching online, this meeting is being recorded. You will have the opportunity to be able to watch it on the city's YouTube channel. So if you decide to run to the kitchen right now to get yourself some refreshment, please know that you can come back in a few minutes and we'll be back on live, but then we can also, you can watch it at any time at your leisure at home with that full presentation from Mr. Vanderveen as well.
And I would recommend we'll probably get started once he sends that to Matt and then Matt will just kind of-
He'll catch up as soon as-
Catch up as soon as we can get that set up.
Yep. So yeah, once you have that sent, Ron, let's, let's keep moving forward.
It's sent. For now, we'll have it, I think, up there. Maybe it'll come back. Oh, I gotta tell it to.
There it is.
There we go. All right. So yes, back in, I think it was December, council asked at the city manager and I investigate options for prohibitions on discrimination. And we did that. We've checked into a number of communities. We've looked at different ordinances and, and then also looked at the model ordinance that the Michigan Department of Civil Rights did. No?
So we'll get started. He'll bring it up. And then Matt's gonna catch up. Until then, it will just be here.
Yeah. And so we, we looked at that and, and I think a good starting point is just to give a brief summary of where state and federal law is on the subject, as that has a relationship to, to the ordinance draft that, that we put before you and the policy draft. So, starting out, efforts on prohibiting discrimination date back at least to the 1960s or before with the passage of federal statutes and then state statutes in the 1970s that include a number of categories, a number of classifications. And you'd think that after all this time, everything would be crystal clear, but the courts and people are still grappling with what the meaning is of a number of, of parts of those statutes. The, the most recent one, and as in the news, a couple of weeks ago, is a Supreme Court decision on defining what sex discrimination includes. And, and so, as it stands right now, the federal and state statutes are interpreted prohibit discrimination based on the traditional classes, race, color, national origin, age, and so forth, and that includes sex. And, and the Supreme Court's decision now says sex includes not only just biological sex, but also gender identity and sexual orientation. And, and so those are classes of discrimination and the areas that they apply to, because the statute covers a number of areas, would be employment, housing, public accommodation, and public, delivery of public services there. Now, you'll see that, if you can read it from your distance, I was hoping you'd have it on your monitors, but there's an asterisk after federal and state there because there is a qualification, actually, three qualifications, I would say, on that. And that is, the Supreme Court decision on the definition of sex is a, is a decision that, that is only made in terms of employment discrimination under the federal statute. The federal statute prohibits discrimination based on sex and the court said sex includes gender identity, sexual orientation, and so forth. Now, the court was also very clear to say it was not deciding other issues beyond that, although because in the area of housing and public accommodation, the same term is used and it's all part of basically the same statute. See if we can catch up here. I would expect- I don't seem to be advancing that. There we go. Here we go. I, I would expect that the Supreme Court's going to interpret the same way. Would only make sense. Second qualification is under state law. There's been a prior interpretation by the attorney general, prior attorney general, that sex does not include gender identity or sexual orientation. The Michigan Department of Civil Rights pretty much vehemently disagrees with that interpretation. I would expect that that interpretation probably will be reversed, although it's not certain at this point. It hasn't happened. And we won't know until it does happen. So under state law, there might be some flux. But again, the same term is used as interpreted by the Supreme Court. So logic would suggest that that's the end result. And there is some pending litigation over what that term means and whether the Department of Civil Rights has it right or, or not. And courts will make a decision on that at some point. And then there's still questions over exceptions or defenses. One of the things that the Supreme Court said in its opinion is that it's not deciding an issue of religious liberties under the statute, that that was not before the court. And the court was very clear, it only decides the issues that are before the court. So that's still an open issue in terms of, of the enforcement of the statute. And that pretty well sums up where we are in terms of, of state and federal, federal law on the subject. In our investigation, there were a number of varieties of, of ordinances that we, we saw. When we looked at the Department of Civil Rights model ordinance, we thought that was a pretty clear and clean ordinance draft that covered a pretty broad spectrum of things and, and was easy to read and understand. And so, we have presented to you a draft of an ordinance that's based very closely on that, with a few changes that were made. But basically, it follows the Civil Rights Department's model. We also presented a draft of a policy here, and it's in your packet. And, and that policy also follows the, the Michigan Department of Civil Rights model ordinance a bit, but is changed to be a policy versus an ordinance.
Ron, before you get into the two.
Yeah.
Before you get that definition, I have a question before we get too far down the road.
Yeah, I'll turn my microphone on, which I usually don't need. In the situation that you have right now, that you just explained between the opposing federal and state laws, what is the law of rule? Who do we follow?
Who do we follow? All right. That's, that's a very good question, because if you have, first off, the, the rule is that the, the priority is federal law trumps state law, state law trumps city law. And so, if there are directly conflicting provisions, then the state law would not be valid, and the federal law would rule. Now, that's a general statement, and it wouldn't be, it, it's not an accurate maybe statement as to this particular situation, because federal law only applies to certain employers. I think the, the cutoff on employers is fifteen employees and greater, where state law applies to employers with one employee or, or more. So there's, there's a gap below the threshold for the federal statute in employment law. And, and what basically we should keep in mind is that the attorney general did not say that the statute authorized discrimination against persons' gender identity and sexual orientation. It doesn't authorize discrimination, it just doesn't prohibit that. And the federal statute's been interpreted as prohibiting that. So there really isn't a conflict. If, if anything, the state statute doesn't go as far as the federal statute. Does that answer the question?
Well, as you, and just thinking very much about, as you have explained to us in the past for our ordinances and things like that, we cannot go stronger than state statute. We can go up to that point, but not over it, or less than.
Yeah.
And I, I guess, I chuckled to myself a little bit when you said that state law, or the federal law trumps state law.
Mm-hmm.
That didn't go very far with marijuana situation, did it?
Well, yes and no. There, there's two components to, to, to a law. One is a component of what the law provides. And secondly, is the component of, is anybody enforcing the law? Okay, so the, the discrepancy there with state and federal law is, the state cannot make legal what the federal law makes illegal, but the federal government has taken the approach that we're not going to pursue enforcement to any great degree in an area that makes marijuana legal. That would be the difference there. Could the federal government enforce it? And we're getting off track there, but couldn't the federal government enforce it in Holland, Michigan, in Grand Rapids, in Detroit? Yeah, they could. They have limited resources and, and choose not to devote those resources to that. Now, you had another question there about how far the city can go in terms of, of state law. And, and I, I would describe the answer to that, and, and it's, it's a good lead-in to talking about the ordinance. I, I would just say the answer to that question is, is that basically, the Home Rule of Cities Act, which is the statute that authorizes the city of Holland and most other cities in the state, if not all now, to exist and, and to take actions. The Home Rule of City Act is, is very clear that, that cities are granted broad authority to deal with local concerns. And so, basically, the city can take action on matters that, that even though they are addressed by state law, and I would describe it as, as this, the city cannot authorize something prohibited by state law, and the city cannot prohibit something authorized by state law, but in between that, the city can act. And, and that's where I would see us here, is, is that we would be acting sort of in between that and, and consistent with state law. If, if council chose to adopt the ordinance, I, I don't presume to, to second guess that or not, to, to predict that here. Maybe it's a good time to answer any other questions as well, if there are any.
Any questions at this point from council? And, and kind of moving away from our, our typical way of doing thing in a meeting, if there is a point where, Ron, I'm assuming this is going to be okay with you, if there's a point where a council member does have a question, do please feel free to, to jump in at that point. If it seems that it's relevant at that point, I think that you're good, you're good with going along with that, aren't you, Ron?
Very good with that.
Good, thank you.
Well, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Huxter.
Just to illuminate the point I think that you've just made, not to be redundant, but I think you've told us before that we are within, it is within our purview to go ahead and adopt an ordinance of this type because of the Home Rule of Cities itself.
That.
I'm just saying amen, I guess.
That, that would be correct. You know, and there are some other examples of that as well. We have an ordinance on trespassing. There's state law on trespassing. We have ordinances on traffic violations. There's state law on traffic violations. So this isn't certainly the, the only area that that type of thing could come up. But yes, the city would be authorized to go forward with a resolution or a, I should say, an ordinance or a policy. And, and the, the two bookends on that, again, are, we can't authorize something prohibited by the state, nor can we prohibit something that's authorized by the state.
Yeah, I think it gets a little confusing sometimes about, you know, where the, where the bookends are there, what, what we can and can't do. And we don't want to, we waste our time on something that's going to be irrelevant in any way. But as you've said, I have to make clear, we are, we've got a clear path here to pursue this. Okay, that's it.
Well, and I think that also, you know, another follow-up comment about the, the question Councilmember Tethuwe had asked about the relationship between the laws and, and the federal law and state law, I mentioned the example of, of marijuana, is, you know, one of the reasons why we have local ordinances that sometimes mirror state law is to, to allow the city to have some local control over enforcement of those. And, you know, as I mentioned, the federal government has limited resources and, and doesn't pursue enforcement of small marijuana violations. The state has a different level of, of the same type of issue, and, and sometimes the, you know, city has its interest in enforcing different requirements. And so even though it might mirror state law, there, there can be reasons for it. Okay, then, we have both, that ordinance and a policy. And the question may be, what is, what is the difference between the two? An ordinance, when it's adopted by the city, becomes the law of the city, just like a statute is the law of the state. And what the ordinance prohibits is illegal, what the ordinance allows is allowed. A policy, and there are legal consequences to that. A violation of an ordinance is either a civil infraction or a misdemeanor, and, and also can be the subject of, of legal proceedings for, for an injunction. A policy is, and then I looked up the, the definition in a dictionary on what a policy is, and I, I thought this is really a spot-on definition of a policy that you adopt. It's a statement of principles. It's a statement of, of the city's principles going forward, but it does not carry the authority of law. So a person can violate a policy without committing a civil infraction or a misdemeanor. The city could, in effect, violate a policy, but it cannot take action to violate an ordinance unless it repeals the ordinance. So that, that would be a description of the difference between the two.
Question. So if one of the city decided to create an ordinance that had criminal, criminality applied to it or a penalty applied to it, who would be the enforcement branch of that at a city ordinance level?
The, the answer to that would be the city, it would be reported, violations would be reported to a department of the city. And then the violations on the city level would be enforced through the city attorney's office, pursuing legal action. Now, I, I say that hesitantly because we do get to a point in the ordinance where we'll, we'll talk about enforcement, and it's not quite the, the same as what I just said. I, on, on that, we have that built into the ordinance.
I'll yield and wait until that.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that further in, in a few minutes. Okay, so as I said, the, the ordinance we, we proposed as a, as something for council to discuss is based on the, the Department of Civil Rights section and, and really tracks state and federal law. It's getting me a little confused because my display here is different than what's up there, so I got to follow that one. So if we look at the, the draft ordinance that's in your, your packet, it starts out with, huh, a statement of policy, a statement of policy that, that's the city's policy that no one should be denied their civil rights, and I'm paraphrasing a little here, but no one should be denied their civil rights based on the protected classes in the ordinance, and based on the areas, employment, housing, public accommodations, and, and public services there. And, and that, again, that is a statement of policy in, in itself. Now, in the ordinance, you'll see, in the draft ordinance, you'll see that there are some things that are highlighted in blue. And those are categories that are not in our current housing ordinance. The other categories that are not highlighted in, in blue are, are things that are in our housing ordinance currently. Then if we look at the next section on definitions, definitions are crucial really to an ordinance, because, you know, I mentioned the, the Supreme Court decision on sex. And they had litigation that got from the, the district court to the court of appeals, and then to the Supreme Court, and their cases in, in many, many different courts, all trying to reach a conclusion of what that word means in the statute. And so, definitions, if there was a definition that was explaining that, then that would not have been the subject of so much litigation. So in our definitions, we start out with a provision that says, whatever a term means under the state civil rights statutes, the Elliot Larson statute and the disability statute, any of those terms used in our ordinance mean the same thing as under state law. There are a lot of terms, and, and it's nice to be able to bootstrap some of those definitions in there, unless we say otherwise. And there's a few things that where we say otherwise. One is, is we define the department to be Department of Human Relations for administration of this draft ordinance. We define discrimination, that's not defined in the statute, define it as, as someone acting based on the protected classes to, to take an adverse action in an area of employment, housing, and so forth. That would be the definition on, on that. And then we have definition of gender identity and sexual orientation in the ordinance, because those are not in the statute, at this point anyway. And then, so, so we have the protected classes. Then what areas are protected, protected fields, and that would be in, under the ordinance that we have there, employment, which we do not have, housing, which we do have, public accommodation, again, we don't have that. And public accommodation, I put a footnote there to that because it's a very broad definition for that term. It's a definition of basically any, any public services being provided, a business whose goods, service, and facilities are available to the public. It's really easy for someone to look at that term and say, a public accommodation sounds like just a hotel, but it's much broader than that. And then public services as well. Now, there are exceptions to those protections. So we start out with, these are the protected classes, these are the fields that, that they're protected in. And then we get to section twenty-five dash four, which lists a bunch of exceptions there. And these exceptions get back to the, the thing I said earlier is that we cannot prohibit something that's allowed by state law. And so, the, the exceptions involve a, a private club that's not open to the public, there was some qualification there, religious educational institution that limits admission. Those are, are in blue in the ordinance because those would be new to our ordinance. We have C and D there involving rental of housing. Those are already in our housing ordinance. Basically, a two-family where the owner lives in the property. Oops. Thank you, Matt.
He was advancing on his computer, didn't he?
Oh, well, actually, I'm looking at the ordinance right now, because I didn't put the exceptions in here. And then the rental of housing where the, is the owner's house and they're gone for twelve months, and, and rented out during the time that they're there. Then we have a few other exceptions, and, and those are, you know, age and family status, if it's dealing with, with older persons' housing, the fifties and, and over. We've seen some projects come in before council that propose that. Those would be exempt from the age and family status concepts. Governmental entities where the qualifications are, are required by statute or charter ordinance policy otherwise provided by law, or conduct that's lawfully protected by the Holland City Charter, or more importantly, by the Michigan Constitution and the United States Constitution. As I said earlier, we can't prohibit something that would be allowed or protected under state or federal law. And then the last item of exception would be something that's exempt under the Elliot Larson Act or the Persons with Disabilities Act. The one thing that sort of jumps to mind right away there would be the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, for example, has an exemption for employment for a bona fide occupational requirement. Doesn't define that real well, but, but that is an exception to the discrimination rules under the statute. That, that would be something that would fall under here. First Amendment freedoms would also fall under these exceptions, to the extent the courts say that those are a defense to discrimination. That would be part of the prior one about the Constitution.
Ron, could I ask, jump in and ask a question here?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Quickly. Under exemptions, letter B, and this may be just a matter of a little wordsmithing or whatever, but, letter B says, "The chapter will not apply to a religious educational institution or an educational institution operated, supervised," blah, 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 blah. I'm wondering if the intention was to begin that paragraph by saying, "It wouldn't apply to a, a religious institution or an educational institution operated by that religious institution." The way it reads now, it seems as though it applies only to educational institutions. And I'm wondering, I think there are some exceptions for, like in a religious institution, like a church or something like that. And I'm wondering, I think there are some exceptions for, like, a religious institution, like a church or something like that. So how would that?
Well, yeah, this actual section comes straight out of the model ordinance from, from the Department of Civil Rights. A religious educational institution is what's intended there. A church operating something would probably be fall under the later one about the First Amendment, the U.S. Constitution that protects religious liberties.
Okay.
And having said that, some of the courts are not always exactly on the same tune with how far the religious liberties exception goes in contrast to the statutes there. That is somewhat of an evolving thing. There have been some recent cases in the news where those have been big issues and have been ruled in favor of the religious beliefs. The First Amendment is one of the bedrocks of our country.
Well, are you, do you feel, do you feel fairly confident that if we were to enact this ordinance as is and church of the really good people come to us and say, you know, we have, we're dealing with what this means to us as a church and we're not quite sure yet and we don't, we're not fully on board with everything that's in here and we would like to exempt ourselves from being required to hire a gay or lesbian person? In that situation, would they be exempted, in your opinion?
They probably would. Now, if we jump to the enforcement and complaint mechanism, which would be the next section in here, you'll see that the process involves a victim of alleged discrimination making a complaint to our Department of Human Relations. That department takes the complaint, gets some information from the victim. And then basically forwards that, depending on what type of complaint. If it's a, an employment situation, I think that you were mentioning, it would get referred to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. And then they would take the ball and run with it at that point in terms of enforcement. And so they would actually be the one making that call as to whether their rights, religious liberties rights would protect them from enforcement.
Would we run afoul of the judicial discovery system if we were more explicit about that in our ordinance?
You know, we would run afoul of it, but I think we would, you know, really, this tracks state law. And what we wanted to do is make this consistent so the Michigan Department of Civil Rights would not say, "We don't have jurisdiction to investigate a complaint that you referred to us." And so we've tried to be consistent with that there. And if we're not consistent, if we were to permit something that's interpreted under state law to be prohibited, our ordinance wouldn't do any good.
Okay, I'll leave you alone for a while.
Okay, thanks. I couldn't quite hear you, Scott.
You did state that we could clarify by definition anything that wasn't defined in the statute as the LA Larson statute, correct?
Correct.
So we could go beyond by defining what maybe a church or a religious educational institution is. And we could also define what a private club is.
We could, we could. If we are making an exception, though, for something that, that is beyond what the state law exception would be, the exception sort of becomes meaningless because we can't allow something that the state would prohibit.
But we don't want to pass something with the perception that it's protecting religious freedoms or churches or private clubs if we don't define what they are.
Yeah. And certainly, we could clarify the language. We could work on clarifying that language as well. I think it's worth saying that, you know, the process, as council knows, is to have this, if it wants to go, if you want to go forward, this would go on for first reading. And then a second reading would be when the adoption takes place. And in that whole process, there can be some, you know, tweaking of the language. There could be some changes to the language and clarifications that would be done to make the ordinance do exactly what you want it to do.
So one more follow-up. So when we talk about these institutions or speaking of the exemption, it's if the organization group as a whole sanctions that, those policies, not an individual. So if an individual violates something that's not reflective of the organization, correct? It would have to be sanctioned by the organization in order to be a violation first, but then whether the exemption applies?
Yeah, I think that pretty much is accurate there.
So a member of a church could discriminate to some degree that wasn't sanctioned. And then the church be held liable for that?
And the church be held liable, probably not. An individual, though, has, you know, religious liberties, religious freedom with their beliefs. It's not just an organizational basis. So I see where you're going with that question. And it could be that the individual would be protected and the organization would be protected there.
I want to clarify that, Ron. I want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Are you talking about an individual acting on behalf of the church or an individual acting in regard to their own interests and what they're doing?
We all know churches. And we know there's division in churches and they have different ideas, religious philosophies. You know, they try to adhere to one similar philosophy, but there's always. So someone may say or act in a way that's different than the policy of the church. Is that then sanctioned by the church or is that then?
Yeah, I think, I sort of understand your question, I think, is more, would the church be held accountable for someone's actions?
Correct.
There. There is a lot of case law on that type of thing. And I'm not sure that, that we could completely answer that here tonight. But basically, if an individual is making policy for an organization or is acting in accordance with the policy of the organization, the organization can be held accountable for that. If a person is acting outside of any scope of authority or they don't have policy authority, and I'm probably being a little on the general side there because there's a lot of, again, law that deals with this. The church can avoid liability for the actions of the individuals. Really, that gets back to employment law where in the circumstances, sometimes the employer can be held liable for what the employee does, sometimes not. That's a vague answer to your question, I know, but, but it depends. The church is basically not going to be liable for an individual's rogue actions. I guess I would say unless they sanction that after the fact. There are a lot of cases on discrimination where the employer has acted to terminate an employee who's committed a violation and then not held liable. There's cases where the employer has not acted and has been held liable.
Ron, if I could, would this be an area where you correctly answered the question, provided to council, that council can construct within those bookends that you described, an ordinance to do what council wants to do? But yet, I also heard you say there's value in bootstrapping us to definitions that are used at higher levels of government, even if there is some ambiguity there? Because then the questions that would be asked and debated there would be debated at those levels of government and not ours?
True.
So in other words, helpful in the enforcement process if we follow closely the state law and the state definitions on it? Because then if we're asking the state to do the enforcement piece of this, they're not having to look back to us and say, "What was your interpretation of what you meant by educational institution or private club?" They're looking at their interpretation of those, of those definitions when they're in the enforcement process. So it keeps us out of that piece of the enforcement process.
Yeah, if I could give an example, I think that might be helpful. If we, if we were to back up in time to, let's say, 2016, the state's position was that the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, when it says prohibits discrimination based on sex, does not include gender identity or sexual orientation. So the Department of Civil Rights would not be enforcing anything relating to that. So if we adopted an ordinance that said sex means those two categories as well, then we got a complaint and we referred it to the Department of Civil Rights, they would say, "We don't have jurisdiction to enforce that, city. Here's your complaint back." And they would not go forward, even though we've defined it in our ordinance. Because their job is not to define, not to enforce our ordinance, but to enforce state law. If we have the same situation today where the Department of Civil Rights has taken the position that it does include that, then they would take that complaint and say, "We have jurisdiction to investigate and enforce this and we'll go forward." Does that, does that help? We've talked a lot about the complaint processes in section 25-5. That is filing a complaint with the Department of Human Relations, the city's Department of Human Relations. You know, one of the things that we heard from some of the public comments today is that, you know, it'd be nice to have a local office to make your complaint to. As it stands right now, an employment discrimination complaint would have to be made through the State Department and not through the city. That would be the difference with our ordinance compared to where things stand now. It will not prevent or prohibit an individual from filing suit. The state law gives a right of civil action for discrimination. It would not prevent a victim from filing a complaint directly with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights or the Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission.
Just to make sure, just to clarify, you're talking about the victim filing suit against the person who discriminated? Not against, you're not talking about filing a suit against the city?
Not against the city, as long as we're not the ones discriminating.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Okay, then, further on the complaint process here. If it's in housing, we would turn the complaint over to the Fair Housing Center. Currently, under our housing ordinance, when a complaint comes in for discrimination, we do turn those complaints over to the Fair Housing Center. And they do an investigation and they try to mediate the situation. And from what I've seen, they're pretty effective at that. They know what they're doing. Other areas besides housing, we would turn it over to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights to go forward on enforcement. With an exception that we've built in, that if it's a complaint about the city or a city employee, our department would investigate that and try to mediate that in-house to resolve it without it being turned over, if that's possible. And so I don't know that there, I've not seen any complaints filed against the city on that subject. But certainly, that would be possible. Why turn those over to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights? Why turn it over to Fair Housing Center? Well, as I mentioned, the Fair Housing Center is very experienced in doing investigations, very experienced in trying to mediate situations, very experienced in trying to get landlords to comply, very experienced in trying to include an educational process to teach landlords who just may not know that they're violating the statute or ordinance before the complaint is made. It may be the wording of an advertisement for a rental property. It may be some action taken to enforce a lease agreement term. They just may not realize they're violating law. And the Fair Housing Center does a great job at trying to educate there as well as mediate situations. The Michigan Department of Civil Rights, their duty is to investigate these type of violations and to pursue them. And they do it on a statewide basis and they have a lot of expertise and experience in doing that. Expertise that we really don't have at this point in-house. And so that would be the benefit of doing the referrals to them as well as budgetary type issues there. There is a provision, there are actually two provisions in the ordinance, 25-6 and 25-7, that do deal with local enforcement. I mentioned the city employee or complaint against the city as one item. We do provide for, if they're, in this, these provisions are in state law, but they're not in the model ordinance that the Department of Civil Rights has. We provide that if a person is in violation of our discrimination ordinance, if adopted, that they're in default with the city. And by our charter and by the Home Rule Cities Act, a person in default is not eligible for appointment to an official position. They're not eligible to contract with the city. The other area would be licenses. If a person would be in violation of our ordinance, that would be grounds for a license to be revoked. Now, I want to caution that there are a lot of business licenses listed in our ordinance. But if you look at the scope of businesses in Holland, there aren't that many businesses as a percentage that have licenses. But for those that do have licenses that are required for operation, a license could be suspended or revoked. And again, as I mentioned, there are provisions in the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act that call for terminating contracts for someone who's found responsible for intentional discrimination and also for terminating licenses, revoking licenses for persons who violate the law in this area.
Are those provisions currently in our nondiscrimination ordinance?
They are not.
Okay.
They are not.
Trying to run a parallel here, and I'm trying to multitask, and for an old guy, that doesn't work very well. We're looking at the ordinance right here, but I'm also trying to do some comparisons as you go down through this, which is, when you go through the policy, I'll do the back again. Specifically in this area, from local enforcement and the way the city lets out its contracts, licenses, and appointments, the policy, we would not be able to do this in the policy? Or could we write it into the policy, just like we do our purchasing policy right now? If you're, well, actually, it's part of the purchasing policy. If you're in violation of the city, you're not eligible. Can that be done in that policy also?
Yes, I, you know, I think we could. The charter is what, well, the Home Rule City says that we can have this provision. Our charter has a provision that says, if you're in default with the city, you're not eligible for appointment to an official position, nor are you entitled to contract. This council is not allowed to grant a contract. Very seldom has that come up, but it has come up a couple of times. And so, you know, that can be an important thing. It's an important thing with property taxes every now and then. That's one big item. And so sometimes we've had issues with a contractor. And they want another contract, while they're still disputing with us over a prior contract. And so those kind of things are important for the city. Could we build that into a policy? I think with the ordinance, it carries, you know, it's the law of the city. It carries a little more teeth. Could we put it in the policy that that's our definition? We could put it in the policy? It may be a little more difficult to enforce if challenged?
Practice, however, right? Now, we'll have to get into the discussion of the merits of a policy against an ordinance someplace, but I just, I needed to run the parallel, thank you.
I have a question. So two, first, why would that be hard to enforce on a policy? Why would that be different?
Well, with the ordinance, it would be, it carries the force of law. It's required to be followed. With a policy, it's just not, the charter does not define what default is. And it's just not real clear whether we could just have a policy where we define it as opposed to an ordinance that would be enforceable.
Okay, makes sense. Now, you talked about the percentages of business licenses with the state, that they were low. I'm sorry, with the city, do you have those numbers? Do we have those numbers?
I don't have those percentages. I don't know if anyone could see or.
I'd hate to guess on percentages there, Quincy. But I will tell you, the vast majority of businesses in the city, when you think of just employers that aren't getting some. when you think of just employers, that aren't getting some type of specialized license. Hotels, for example, get licensed, and those, our short-term rentals get licensed. But the vast majority of businesses in the city have no reason to get a license from us. Like, your major employer, you know, you think manufacturers, et cetera, do not have a need and do not have a license from the city.
What about service sector?
Fewer now, because we, they get a license, for example, from the Health Department at the county level, but they don't need to get a license from us in the same way in most instances.
Okay. Thank you.
Chapter seventeen of the Ordinance Code does have a laundry list of businesses that are required to have licenses in the city, which is a good reference. Chapter seventeen of the Ordinance Code. I think it's Section seventeen dash one or two. It gives a nice list, and it gives cross-references to the sections that address those businesses. And just moving on with enforcement, you will see that the draft ordinance does make a violation a civil infraction. Now, having said that, we would refer complaints to the Department of Civil Rights and Fair Housing Center to pursue enforcement action on. There could be situations where they decide not to enforce, and their decision may not be, like, it's hard to conceive of a situation where they say, "Well, there's not a violation," and we would say, "There is," and take action. But it's not that situation. But I could see a situation where they would say, "We're preoccupied with other types of violations now. We don't have time to deal with this one," where we could. But this also takes us back to, why do we refer to them? Because they have broader powers, broader remedies, requiring back pay, requiring reinstatement, requiring other things that we can't do. And so, doing a civil infraction would be a situation where they're just not able to handle the violation for whatever reason. Would be probably the only situation where we would get into. Or if the courts were to say, the state's definition of, well, the meaning of sex in our state ordinance is not inclusive of gender identity, where there'd be a gap that we filled in, that the Department of Civil Rights doesn't have jurisdiction, then there could be a room for ordinance prosecution there. Sure.
So, you said that if, at the state level, they don't have, they kick it back to the city level, right? That's a possibility.
That's a possibility.
Okay. So, saying that, would we have the resources to deal with that? And I guess if we didn't have the resources to deal with that, how would we deal with that?
That sounds like a city manager question, unfortunately, Ron, not a city attorney question.
Sounds like it to me.
I'll give the answer that we, while we do have a police department that does investigations, correct, much of this type of thing is specialized investigation. So, certainly in my conversations with our Chief of Public Safety, this is not something that he thinks that we would particularly be good at. And probably more so, you've definitely seen, and we've talked about, you picked up that if there is one recommendation in all of this, it's that we would refer. I think most of that is because the toolbox, if you would, of mechanisms that the state would have in the instance where there is a violation is much greater at the state. I think that's also where you come back to probably wanting to bootstrap the language that we have locally in ordinance, in particular, if you choose to adopt an ordinance, or even in a policy for that matter, because then you're not creating those gaps that just, that Ron just talked about, that then the state would be in a position to say, "Hey, that's outside of your jurisdiction." And then it would return back to us, and then we'd need to deal with that resource issue and that expertise issue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So, again, going back to who's going to enforce the infraction, right? If we were to charge someone with the infraction and proceeded to court, and let's say the individual was found guilty, and they decided to appeal it, where would that go?
Yeah, civil infraction is something that is pursued in the district court locally here, and if someone decides they want to appeal the decision of the district court, it goes to the circuit court, which would be Ottawa County Circuit Court, or it could be Allegan, I guess.
And our attorney would defend that?
Right.
And same likewise, if there's an appeal, beyond that?
Yeah. We would prosecute the civil infraction, and we would defend the appeal. Beyond the circuit court, a person could ask for what we call leave of court to appeal to the Court of Appeals. A leave of court means asking for permission to appeal. And the Court of Appeals would decide whether they want to hear it or not. And the same is true as after that level. You could ask for permission to go to the Supreme Court, Michigan Supreme Court. And of course, we would defend that as well. The Supreme Court does not take on many cases. It has to be something of statewide significance for them to look at, because they have very limited time to spend on it.
Either way, if we passed an ordinance, we would be inclined to defend it with, through our own attorney.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, if the Michigan Department of Civil Rights is going forward with a prosecution, though, they would handle the prosecution of that. And then if there's an appeal from that, they would handle the appeal from that as well. That's it for what I have on the ordinance. We have the draft policy that you note is shorter. Again, that's because it doesn't have the same force and effect as an ordinance. So, there's some things that just don't work in it. Again, the beginning of it is a statement of its purpose, same as what was in the first section of the ordinance, that it's a policy of the city that no one be denied their civil rights based on the protected classes that are listed there. And definitions are the same as in the ordinance in terms of classes and gender identity, sexual orientation, what discrimination means there that we talked about before. And then, under the statement or the policy, again, it says no one's to be discriminated against in their employment, housing, public accommodation, public services. Pretty much the same as the ordinance, except now, a violation of this is not a violation of the law. It's simply not following city's policy. We don't have exceptions or enforcement provisions in the policy, because you don't enforce, well, you enforce a policy by following it, not approving people that are contrary to it, but it's not a violation of the law. You can't have a civil infraction as a violation of the policy, for example, or a misdemeanor. The complaint process in the policy is basically the same as what's in the ordinance. Complaints are filed with the department. They're forwarded on to the Department of Civil Rights or Fair Housing Center to investigate. And again, those complaints would be enforced by the state. So, as a conclusion, existing law prohibits discrimination in Holland. Holland's not exempt from existing state and federal law, but sometimes the state and federal officials seem far away. A draft ordinance or policy makes a local statement about discrimination. And the, you know, ordinance and policy addresses the LGBT issue in the unlikely event that the interpretations are not upheld going forward under federal law. How could they not be upheld when the Supreme Court makes a decision? If at some point that Congress decides to change the law, it could. I'm not saying that it's likely they would, but that's how that could happen. Another alternative is the state courts can say, "We come to a different conclusion under state law, that that doesn't include that, those categories." That is, I'm not saying that's likely, I'm just saying that's a possibility. So, that is my conclusion, and I'd be glad to answer any more questions.
Yep. Quincy, before we, you get into that, we would ask that all members of the audience please wear their masks appropriately over both their face and their nose. Thank you, that's for the health and safety of everyone that is here. Thank you. Quincy?
Yes, could you, again, for me, go over the public accommodations and public services definitions, again?
Public services would be basically governmental services that are provided to someone. Public accommodations would be businesses that provide goods and services, facilities for the public to use. You may have heard of the baker in California that was involved in litigation where he refused to make a cake, a wedding cake, I think it was to, for a gay couple. And there, that business, the bakery, was treated as a public accommodation because it provides its goods to the public. That would be one example of a place of public accommodation. A banquet facility would be a place of public accommodation. A lot of retail stores would be.
Other questions?
Can I ask you a question?
Fire away.
Okay. This is maybe a little bit off the track we've been going down, but currently, Chapter twenty-five in our code is vacant, right?
Correct.
And so, this would be something that would be plopped into that space. And I'm curious, having kind of mentioned this a couple of times before, housing is part of what we're considering here, employment and so forth. I'm wondering about references from other parts of the code that currently now have non-discriminatory references, like in the housing code and so forth. How, it's kind of a process thing maybe, but how would those sections refer or relate to this potential new chapter?
If you were to go forward with this ordinance, what we would do is prepare a companion ordinance that would repeal some of the sections in Chapter fourteen on housing, because these would replace those sections.
So, there'll be some housekeeping sort of stuff to do.
Right.
That's very, that's very good.
And if you're curious about why Chapter twenty-five here, it is because it was vacant. It's because, as we thought about the title for the ordinance, prohibition on discrimination, it fits alphabetically in the same order. All these chapters are alphabetical. It allows us to get a title in the index of chapters that says what the chapter is about.
Wow, it's as if it were meant to be.
Please recognize Ron for that, he's proud of that. I have a piggyback on that, Ron. If we went down the policy route versus the ordinance route, would we be doing the same kind of housekeeping with our current nondiscrimination ordinance? Because the language that we've got in the policy here covers some of the same areas that we're currently covering under the existing nondiscrimination ordinance.
I would probably recommend, we get to that point, that we not do away with the sections on housing. We may want to look at whether we want to make some adjustments for definitions in those. And we may want to get rid of some of the sections, but if we're adopting a policy, we probably want to leave that mostly intact.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from council members? Yeah, Dave?
Well, let me lead into this. Brother Mike earlier mentioned a later discussion on the comparison between an ordinance and a policy. So, my understanding here is that that, an ordinance literally codifies what we're talking about into law. And in order to change that, it's a much larger, longer process, more difficult process by design. Whereas a policy, and forgive my way of describing this, but a policy is much more susceptible to the changing whims of political or other structure. For example, you know, we know what the position of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights is now on their interpretation of things. However, if there's a new administration, that should happen at some point to come along and inhabit the balancing. It's very possible, as we've seen in other things, that that interpretation could change based on someone else's whatever. So, the proclivity of political influence puts policies in a very precarious position. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty fair assessment. Now, you know, an example, you mentioned the change in administration. The difference between back in two thousand, say, sixteen and seventeen, and today with the, with the Department of Civil Rights is that there was a change in administration. And prior to that election, the Attorney General was pretty strong on saying it's not included in the statute. And the current administration, I don't think, is feeling that way. They haven't overturned that, reversed that opinion from the Attorney General, but they've said, basically, "Civil rights, you can go ahead and enforce it the way you interpret it." So, yeah, that type of change happens. If there's another change after the next election, it could go back to what it was before. So, policies are easier to change. Now, I would say on a local level, how do you change a policy? Well, five votes on council at one meeting would change a policy. How do you change an ordinance? Five votes at council at two meetings would change an ordinance. But it does mean that you have to take that official action to change the ordinance. If you have an ordinance that says you cannot do something, council doesn't have the authority, as long as that's on the books, to do it. If you have a policy that says you cannot do something, well, you violated your policy if you do something that's prohibited, but it's nothing unlawful at that point. A good example that you might be familiar with, the audience probably is not, but in zoning, you have a master plan and you have a zoning ordinance. The master plan is a projection of what we'd like to see happen, or what should happen, and it's a policy statement. The ordinance says what can and cannot happen. And so, sometimes you do have an ordinance adopted that is contrary to the master plan.
I just want to, lastly, say, I don't mention that to suggest that we should be, you know, opportunistic about this, take that sort of approach, or make, hey, you know, while the sun's shining. I think it's important that if this is really what we perceive to be a community value, that we want to put some credence behind, then the method with which we embed that, the way that we present it to our community, the way that we hold it forth for the next generation, you know, even though a couple of meetings and ten votes or whatever could change things, there's a higher purpose, a higher reason, I guess I'd like to suggest, for codifying it rather than just making it a policy. I'm not trying to say, "We got to do this quick while we can." There's a better reason for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to add to that? I saw you leaning into the mic, so, no? All right. Other questions, comments? I want to kind of piggyback on what you said there, Dave. Right now, and Ron, you're going to, I'm going to put on, again, my lawyer cross-examination hat here. Right now, we've got an ordinance in the city of Holland that protects housing rights for certain groups in regard to age, race, national origin, color, sex, marital status, religion, and source of income.
Correct.
Okay. If we put a, if we, if we put an ordinance in place, as you've presented to us, that would add employment, public accommodations, and public services, to us, that would add employment, public accommodations, and public services, not only for those people, but also in regard to disability, education, familial status, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, height and weight.
Correct.
Okay. But if we go the policy route, we keep, based on what you just said, we would likely keep that housing piece the way that it is right now, and put a parallel policy in place, potentially, for employment, public accommodation, and public services. So we'd really have two different tracks, two different sets of rules for two different groups of people.
You could. And, you know, another thought is, with a policy, I can't go to court and say, someone violated our policy, they're responsible for civil infraction or a misdemeanor. An ordinance, I can. That would be a big difference there.
Okay. And purely from an administrative standpoint, for staff, we would be saying, we've got two different sets of rules for you to follow when a complaint comes in. The determination needs to be made in regard to whether this is a complaint regarding age or race, or potentially disability or education or familial status. If we've got, if we go the ordinance and the policy route.
We would have the rules in two different places. I think the rules pretty much would be the same, though.
But the process ends up being different, and the remedies end up being different, don't they?
Yeah, well, under our current ordinance, when a complaint comes in, it does get referred to the Fair Housing Center, just like it would be under this policy. So, yeah, there are, there would be two sets of rules. They're in two places. There could be some differences that come up as we, you know, as practice goes forward. But complaints are referred as a practical matter now to, and that's not in, I don't believe that's in the ordinance, but as a practical matter, that's what the city has done with those to take advantage of the skill of the Fair Housing Center.
But if I heard you right, enforcement is different policy versus ordinance?
It is.
Exceptions are different policy versus ordinance?
It is.
Okay. So, again, back to that original point, if we go the ordinance route as we have with the groups that we've been providing protections to, if we keep that that way and go the policy route on the other group, we've got, we've got two, two different tracks, one that has exceptions, one that doesn't, one that has some enforcement procedures, one that has others or lesser?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mike?
I'm shaking my head back here.
No.
Good.
We knew this was going to come to this.
We did, we did.
I'm going to disagree with you to a certain extent in the fact that the policy can have the same language that your ordinance does. Ultimately, both pieces of legislation, if you want to put it that way, have the same goal in mind. Can we agree on that?
They, I believe that the goal that we are looking for is to prevent discrimination against our residents in the community of Holland.
Okay.
Okay. I'll agree with you on that. Yes, definitely.
Thank you. I'm going to get up against two lawyers here, and I hadn't got a chance. But where I'm going to disagree with you just a little bit, Nathan, is that, is what I said. Starting with the premise that both of these documents have the same goal in mind. One has an enforcement aspect on it, the other one doesn't. But we are not running two different paths, because as we have talked about, and as Ron has laid out, and as Keith has laid out, the procedure for reporting these is the same path in both the policy and the ordinance.
That first step, yes. I would agree with you on that. Yeah, I'll agree with you on that.
Wow. You're trying to throw me off, aren't you? And maybe that's where we, that's where the chasm widens just a little bit, in your mind and the way I'm looking at things here. I need to be convinced that because we are trying to accomplish the same thing in both of these, why we would go the extra step, and this is the discussion that I was talking about, Dave, why would we go the extra step to have the enforcement on there just to refer everything to somebody else? Why would we, with the limited resources that we have right now, go that extra step? I'm...
I'll answer your question with a question.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we? We have been, we have been protecting that first group of people with an ordinance for years.
Okay.
We've been willing to go that extra step. We've been willing to expend the resources for that first group of people for years. My question is, what makes the second group of people different that we're not willing to take that extra step and expend those resources to protect their rights in the same way that we have the first group?
So we modify the original ordinance with that group that you're referring to. But the other portions, I'm...
I think that's what, I think that's what the ordinance here does.
I'm wanting to run, I'm sorry, I want to walk before I run. Yes, this has been going on for a very, very, very long time. I'm fully aware of that. The wheels of government turn very slowly. I'm fully aware of that.
Oops, sorry. Didn't mean to do that to you.
But I also want to make sure that we are looking at, and obviously with the group that we had here, and as you well know, in your short time in government, but you've been around, we're not going to satisfy everybody.
Of course not.
That's one of the joys of government. We try to come someplace in between and not get everybody 100% mad at us. Bad analogy, but it's the truth.
I've been in the courtroom enough to know, to know that exact, that exact thing. But the problem I've got, Mike, is that I cannot reconcile in my brain why we would provide additional enforcement procedures for somebody because they were discriminated on based on age or race or national origin, or color or sex or marital status, religion or source of income, but not be willing to provide that same level of protection. And it is, it's two different levels of protection. Not willing to provide that same level of protection for somebody because of disability, or education, or familial status, or sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, height or weight. I can't, I can't reconcile in my head why we would have two different standards for two different groups of people.
It's, and, okay.
That's, and...
You have it divided, I don't. Okay? And I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand.
But if we have a policy for one group and an ordinance for the other, it is a division.
See, in my head, why I can't separate these, and I'm going to get very personal here, in my head, I treat my neighbors as I want to be treated.
We all should.
I hate discrimination of any kind, shape, way, shape or form. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
That's why I can't, I've got my head right now, again, like I said, I'm going to say it again. We're trying to accomplish the same thing.
I agree.
I see some, I see some pitfalls, I see some stumbling blocks, and you have it far clearer in your head, I appreciate that, and convince me, convince me otherwise, that the policy will not, the policy will do the same thing as the ordinance.
Then why not do an ordinance? Because I agree, Mike, I agree with you completely. I think you and I want the same thing. I think you and I want the people of the city of Holland to be treated the way you and I would want to be treated, to be treated the way you and I are treated.
Absolutely.
And, and that's why I can't reconcile in my head two different sets of rules for two different groups of people. And we may just have to agree to disagree on that, because I think you and I do want the same outcome. I think that we just see different ways of being able to achieve that.
And I've read this thing, I've read both the policy and I've read the ordinance half a dozen times already, and I'm glad we're not voting tonight. Really glad we're not voting tonight, because I need to read this again, especially listening to my colleagues and you.
Well, thank you.
And Ron's explanation, definitely.
Well, there's one thing that you and I always agree on, and that's process.
It's process.
And making sure that whatever we do, we're doing it right, we're doing it the right way.
And that's why I'm glad, and that's why I put it out here. I want to have this discussion. I want to understand, okay? Times have changed. It was said earlier tonight, the city has changed. Some people are going to agree which way it changed, some people are not going to agree which way it changed, some, you know, and we can get into the different philosophies. But what we all need to remember is treat everybody the way you want to be treated.
Exactly.
And the selfish attitude that we have, that we've, that we've seen very prevalent in the last little bit here, is just frightening, absolutely frightening. Now, I don't want to bring that into this ordinance. I'm going to shut up now, which is very unusual for me, but I'm going to shut up now and listen to my colleagues, because I need to be convinced why to go the ordinance and not the policy.
Colleagues, Lynn?
Well, I was trying to decide when I was coming over, when I was thinking about tonight, was how to think about an ordinance and a policy, like what would my argument be, because I'm in favor of an ordinance. And I think Ron's definitions were really helpful in that an ordinance is the law of the city, and a policy is a statement of principles, which doesn't mean that it's unimportant, but it's a, it's something lofty, which I think we've already said in our mission statement and our vision statement. We already, you've said it yourself, you don't want to discriminate against anyone, you don't, you hate it. So our principles state that, and I think what our laws do is reflect those principles. So, and I completely agree with you, Mayor, that, that if you, if we don't put them all in the same ordinance, it feels like we're categorizing them differently. Because a policy is, doesn't have the same enforcement, enforcement mechanism that a law does. So for me, those, that was what made all the difference, was Ron explaining an ordinance being a law of the city and a policy being a statement of principles.
So, just to lighten, give some levity, I like that height was added.
I was very glad my stuff.
I like that too for a different reason, yeah.
So I like that. Yeah, Matt's up there saying, hi, yeah, good job.
Me too, Scott.
Yeah. Just for some levity. But, you know, so times are changing. We're all changing. We all have different ideas about this. But what I'm struggling with on this ordinance, the ambiguity in the definitions. I think we, as a council, if we do move in those directions in ordinance, we can't let that ambiguity exist. I mean, we have to define, I need the sections for religious institutions and the protections and exemptions for those to be a little bit more definitive. But I know you're saying, it's going to be very difficult to defend it later, but we're going to defend it later in an appeals process if somehow somebody decides to appeal it. We're going to defend it beyond the appeals process, okay? So what I'm saying is, we need to make sure we, as a board, understand what we're passing if we do an ordinance. And I think clear definition of what we mean by religious protections is vital to bringing the other side of this equation and to build community around this ordinance for it to happen. And if we don't do that, I don't think that we're doing a fair or responsible thing here as a council. So that's one. I have another one here. I do think we need a policy. And the reason I say I think we need a policy, we need to start there. And I think it needs to be exactly the same, right? Because we do need a statement, other than just an ordinance, we still need a statement of what we mean, and what we, whether we agree or disagree. And I'd like to at least see that, if Mike agrees on that, or if others agree on that, that we all agree that the statement of what we believe as a city, or what we believe as, as community is important, that we state it in a policy. And that we're all agreeing on that, hopefully. We may not all agree on an ordinance, but at least we agree on a statement. Now, why those two wouldn't be the same, I don't know. But I think it's important to at least have that built into this process.
Other comments, questions? Roll.
As I'm sure is true about all, sort of the majority of us, you know, my head's been kind of spinning all these different ideas, and I think, similar to Lynn, you know, how do I, I don't know, just feeling like, what, how do I articulate maybe the value of the ordinance and the, and the policy? And I'm, I'm right now certainly inclined, I think, towards an ordinance. And, you know, for you guys to know kind of my background, you know, I'm a church kid. I grew up a PK ministry, has been my context. You know, a lot of my life relates back, back to that, in my, in my, my younger years, but also certainly now. And so as I'm thinking about ordinance and policy, and I see, I see, you know, the policy as maybe the church, you know, statement of faith, or maybe core values, or at the flavor of a congregation. And this is, this is who we are as a congregation, while ordinance, you know, the, for the church, the ultimate authority is the scriptures, it's the Bible. And so that's kind of where you place, like, everything comes back to that. Ultimately, this is our expression, this is the way we do things, this is what we value, this is what's important to us. Is there any legal binding to this? You know, are we going to be hated, you know, or disliked, or whatever, for this or that, or the way that we worship? No, that's us. But ultimately, our final authority is scripture. You know, and so to talk about policy, right, if we as a city are saying we value certain things, and, and desire for it to be ingrained, you know, into our, into our DNA, I mean, this is who we are, this is how we exist, this is what our, our future is going to look like, it makes sense to me, right, that it would be the law, that it would be part of, I mean, this is, this is who we are, this is how we're moving forward, this is what we believe, this is our credence, this is, it's not just our flavor of the day, you know, that I'm going to move over to the next thing, because suddenly I've shifted. Right? And so that's, I don't know if that's a simple way to think about it, I don't know if that's a complex way to think about it, I don't know if it confuses the whole thing, but for me, that's where my mind and my head is at, at least between the policy and the ordinance. I think I can go, I can go in a lot of different directions, or even further, as I think about law. All right, yeah, just the idea of the law as it pertains to my Christian faith and the gospel. Because I think, you know, I live according to the gospel and not just the law. I think those are two different distinctions. And I was, you know, looking, looking at something earlier about Paul, the Apostle Paul calling out the law, and making a distinction as to whether or not it's sinful, right? Is the law sin itself because it calls out sin? There's this one statement, and I think, I think I've heard it around this table before. Laws don't legislate hearts, but they certainly steer them, right? It certainly calls out what's good and what's not. And, and Paul's reference is ultimately about, you know, is, is the law sinful because it calls out sin? No, it calls, it calls out what's, what's wrong. So if we don't have policy in place that calls out the things that we deem to be unlawful, then how will it ever be unlawful, right? How will people ever have, have a standard, I guess, to yield to or to bend to, right? And right now, we're talking about protections. How will, how will be, people know that they're discriminating, right, unless there's a law in place that calls that discrimination? And right now, yes, we're in a season where we're talking about discrimination a lot more broadly. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a whole other conversation taking place in addition to this, right? And right now, we're looking at policy language that I think also gets into some more broader topics, right, more naming some things that we, we didn't even consider. In fact, some of the, some of the things that we were asked to consider by, you know, the group who spoke and presented, we, we went above and beyond that. I think we included sexual expression, which wasn't even something that was part of the letter that they recommended. So we're looking at things more broadly than that. So that's where my head is at. I do think, if we're going to do this, ordinance is, is the way to go, right? If this is what we're saying we, we value as a community, it has to be there. Policy's great, you know, maybe we can do both. All right, I think both statements are great. But what are we looking at from that perspective?
Jay?
My guess is, there's a lot of people in this room who live their lives by the gospel. I've lived in Holland my whole life. And I wish the people who created, the inspired word by this book of the Bible were written, that it wasn't so easy to translate it or to interpret it in so many different ways. There are church people here tonight whose congregation... There are church people here tonight whose congregations would, are the most embracing and loving people in the world. There were people who spoke here tonight that talk about a faith-based community as if because of that we can't consider this kind of thing because in somehow we were wrapped up in evil. I'm conflicted with faith because I grew up in this town. I think it's, it's the downside, the negative side of the faith double-edged sword that we have in this town is there, we, somehow we've got this, this piece that just continues to be unwelcoming, unloving in a way that I want to be. And I, I've, religion has not come easy for me. Somebody turned out, the term faith-based community, we are a faith-based community. We have been a faith-based community. Fifty years ago, we probably had a whole lot of different faith, a, a different level of faith in the community. Hundred and fifty years ago, we were speaking Dutch in all our churches. It has to be far more simple, I think, if we're going to be, if we want to think in terms of our economy going forward, attracting students like my daughter, my daughter's friends, the youth of America who are learning that this world is a far more diverse place every day than what we have right now. We have to become more welcoming and this notion that the LGBTQ community and folks who are transgendered and even the other categories we've had to add, height, weight, I thought that was kind of interesting. I'm almost pleased that I struggle with faith and I don't bind myself by those, those strings because it's so much easier for me to just be more welcoming, to just love everybody. You don't have to put it, make it so damn complicated. We've been talking about this for 10 years. It's the biggest disappointment I've ever had in my life when we didn't pass this thing 10 years ago. And I know well the impact it had on this community. I know well it had the impact it continues to have on this community. And here we are right now with a chance to do it better probably than we would have done it 10 years ago. I have absolutely no interest in a policy. It makes a, it's a terrible statement, it falls way short. And I don't think it could be said any better than the mayor said it about, why do you want to have two different ways of going at it for different people who live in our community? It can't be said any better than that. So I don't know what's the next step, but I say we, we get our heads together as soon as we humanly possibly can, agree on what I would strongly recommend is an ordinance that makes us a, a loving, observable, loving community in the 21st century moving forward and make it happen. And I hope we end up this discussion tonight with a, with a recommendation of getting it on a first reading for, for our meetings as soon as we humanly possibly can. Thank you.
Raul?
Yeah, I remember where, some other thoughts that I, that I was having and I think to, to Scott's point. You know, I am more, because my mind's kind of made up in that sense, or in that context, towards ordinance, I do think that the language that we ultimately adopt is, is kind of the crux of the whole thing. Like, what are we, what does that actually need to look like? What are we agreeing upon? I mean, right now, it seems like this is kind of modeled over, you know, after things that have been provided in other, you know, contexts, right? And this is what it could be, kind of to its extent, but what do we want it to be? And so I'm interested more so in that conversation versus the, the policy ordinance thing. I mean, that, to me, seems a no-brainer, so I'm ready to move on kind of to that next piece.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, so we have an ordinance protection against discrimination and this new wording enriches it or expands upon it. And I love what you said, Mike, you hate discrimination, you wouldn't do this. So if you had a rental place, you would rent to anyone. And if we had people like you, you wouldn't need ordinances because this, we wouldn't need it. You would, you know, we're all God's children and this is part of the love that that requires and, and is part of it. But we do need discrimination ordinances and I would vote in favor of an ordinance that includes this new wording with all the expanded weight and height and disability, I think that, that was huge. That never, I mean, that, wow, I don't, why didn't we even think of that? So this is the, the way I would go and I think an ordinance would codify exactly what we were thinking would be our vision. We mean this and it's just the way to go. It is the right way to go. And I, I, I agree, Jay, the mayor's description, why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we include these people?
Any other comments? Quincy?
Yes. One thing that was brought up that we haven't talked about, and, and one of the reasons I kept asking about those, those two situations, and then you reminded me of the individual in California who baked the cake and, or wouldn't bake the cake, I should say, and all of that. So I guess one of the things that I want to look at is religious freedom for individuals versus institutes. I understand that. So I think that's something that we need to talk about as well and not leave that off the, off the dialogue. So, looking at this ordinance and everything in blue, going up to section 25-6 and everything, I guess I'm struggling with that aspect of this ordinance for sure. And now my computer doesn't want to work. Anyways. Yep. So it goes, all, all of these are new sections to the ordinance. 25.5, I'm sorry, not 25.5, 25.6, prosecution, 25.7, violations, fines and penalties, 25.8, report to council, and 25.9, interpretations. I guess to me, as we sit and look at this and the process that we currently have is that we push this on to the state level when we have a complaint. And if we're not going to do anything, I guess I'm not understanding or seeing the value in these last four bullet points. So I guess I would need some persuasion or understanding of I guess what this really adds to what we're doing with the ordinance.
I can, I can give you a little clarification on one of those, Quincy, based on one of the first things that you said in your comments. If you look at 25.9B, this, this chapter shall not be read to prohibit or interfere with a person's or religious institution's free exercise of religion as protected by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution in Article, Article 1, Section 4 of the Michigan Constitution. So when you're, based on what you said in the first part, wanting to make sure that we're providing those, those protections, I think that's where we're doing that.
That, that's my comment, basically it.
And point of, point of clarification for Ron, for Ron in this process, if we put this out on for first reading, we've got the ability then to be able to, to mark this up, make amendments, do those kinds of things before the final adoption of this, correct?
Oh, very true, very true.
So, true, but then would we have the ability to vote on policy or ordinance? How would that work?
If. We would. Bringing it up, if, if, if in fact it is the pleasure of this council bringing it up as early as next week. I, I don't know if that's going to be good, bad or ugly. But it would be at that point, we would decide whether it's going to be a policy or an ordinance. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but I believe at that point, if it was decided that it was going to be an ordinance, that would be considered the night of the first reading. So the second reading would not be until August and we would have a, no, we would, we would have a chance in between there to, to have some discussion.
So if I'm interpreting, you're chief governance officer, so I'm going to defer to you on this. We could have two agenda items at the meeting next week, a first reading on an ordinance and a, well, we don't even have to do a first reading on a policy.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's actually one item depending on which way we're going to go and then have a subitem underneath there. If, if in such, this passes, then 18-1 would be the first reading of that ordinance as it has been presented at that point. And as Nathan said, as the mayor said, excuse me, sir, that we can doctor it from that point after the first reading, if, if it's deemed necessary to do that.
Yeah, and there's a fifth Wednesday in July, which gives us a little extra time that we wouldn't otherwise have between those two regular meetings.
To digest it.
To digest and, yep. And do markup. And then at the, at the follow-up meeting in August is when we would be able to discuss that, decide what, what exactly we wanted to do from that point forward. And we could even at that point, if, if it was the pleasure of council, to table it, to do more, to do further discussion and further markup if we chose to do that.
So just so I'm, I'm clear, we wouldn't leave this meeting with an idea of an ordinance or a policy. This conversation would continue again next week and we would decide then or whenever it was we were doing first reading.
Mr. Van Beek?
As, as your employee that is responsible to bring something forward, it would be helpful to, to have you be clear as to what document or documents you would want on the agenda. So we could, I'm just going to give three options that are the most simple. We could have just a policy on an agenda. We could have just an ordinance on an agenda. Or theoretically, we could have a policy and an ordinance on an agenda.
Or, or forth, nothing on the agenda in regard to this issue, yeah.
But I think in, in light of fairness, in light of fairness, because, and, and yes, we do look for head nods in a lot of occasions. I'm going to be so bold as there's enough disagreement on which way to go on this that I think both of them need to be. It would be unfair not to have more conversation on which way to go and have that at the public meeting, if you would indulge me.
I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing nods around the table from some anyway saying that putting both on the agenda would not be a problem and by, am I seeing enough, enough nods in that regard to even bring it up as an issue?
I like one, one item, but I will go along with two. I think it's easier with one, it's clearer, there's something to talk about. But if we're not in agreement after one meeting of discussion, then we should probably talk some more.
In the guise of openness that we've been trying to go through this whole process, yes, this particular study session has been televised. However, if we deny the public the chance to have the discussion on both of these at a public meeting that's publicly noticed, we have just, I hate to be this firm, but we have just failed what we have tried to do.
I don't think that's firm, I think that's accurate.
Ultimately, it may come down to the one piece, but we owe it to the public, we owe it to all the people that have invested in this, be it pro or con, to have that conversation in a public meeting.
That, that, yes, it hasn't just occurred in a study session, it's, and, and people have been given that same, that, that week to be able to, to comment to us in regard to what it is that we've discussed this week.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Dave, you, you, I'm sure had some sage words there as well.
No, that's what sage, I don't mean to play Mr. Duthuy here, but I think, you know, a study session being an opportunity for informal discussion, for us to come away from this. I know we do head nods and all that jazz, although in ways probably supposed to know that. But for us to come away from here giving, and I'm sorry to say this, not very sorry, giving city manager direct instructions about what to bring is, I think, would be a violation of what the intention of a study session is. We can't make decisions here, we can't come, we can't come to those kind of official conclusions. So what I'm trying to say is I think it would be a prudent thing to bring it to the next meeting. Or let us vote on which we want and then proceed from it.
Well, it's, it's actually following my original motion stating one way or the other, or recommendations, and at this point, they are still both recommendations, so.
Yeah, see?
It's following forward.
I have one other thing I'd like to address too before.
Certainly.
Shut up for the night. And I've been trying to think about what the process would look like for this, but a decade ago, the Human Relations Commission went through a year-long process of discovery and, and debate and finally brought to the city council a recommendation, an actual recommendation about the validity of making this change. And we know what happened, but, and I don't necessarily want to put the HRC in the position of having to go through that process again of making a recommendation, but I do think that since the impact of this potentially goes through HRC and particularly the HRC office and the director of HRC to one degree or another. I'm wondering, and I would ask my colleagues' opinion of this, if it wouldn't be the prudent and respectful thing to do for us to at least refer whatever language we decide on or are thinking about to the HRC for their, an opportunity for them to give an opinion of what we're proposing. If they see something that strikes them odd or, or whatever. Since they're going to be dealing with it primarily, one way or another, I think it would be advisable to let them weigh in on it in one fashion. So, again, I don't know how that would impact the timeline. I know that they have a meeting the last Thursday of the month, so there is time to refer to them, to get back to us, you know, before August. But I offer that as a point of consideration to my colleagues.
Mr. Van Beek, you look like you're anxious to say something, or, or am I misreading your eyes?
I'm think, I'm thinking, I, I am happy to facilitate whatever council would like to do. I'm going to look to Ron and I'm going to ask a question. The ordinance, at least the way it's set up, when it talks about the department, quite frankly, the way that would flow is that department is doing it because you've directed me to do it and then I'm empowering and even use language, the department or another department assigned by the city. So while I certainly have no qualms about having the Human Relation Commission weigh in on it as a matter, I don't believe that the way this was set up, particularly as an ordinance, it is really anything that would ever go before the Human Relations Commission. And in this current case, Esther as an employee would be doing it because I've, you've assigned it to her as a duty, which is a little bit different than maybe some of the other things that she does, working with that commission to advance different things of the city. So I really wasn't going to say anything, but since the mayor kind of looked at me right on the spot, Dave, I guess that's, so I'm not saying that's not, I'm, I'm absolutely not saying that's not a bad idea, but I'm not sure it's necessary because in the sense, the director would be doing it because you, through me, have assigned it to that, this is her duty.
Okay, yeah, I'm not suggesting that it's absolutely necessary to.
But it could be a fine idea.
Technically, but since they're the commission within our city structure that deals with matters of discrimination, anti-discrimination, equality, who else would be better suited to have a look at it? And just out of, as a matter of courtesy, I think it's.
And that's, yeah. Nope, I, I don't think there's a problem with that at all, and I think that, that if, if I'm reading the table correctly, I think we put both, both things on the agenda for next week, we, we. next week, we addressed them next week, and then we've got some time in between there for HRC to take a look at it, to be able to get some feedback to us before we have it on an agenda at a later date.
And that was, I was going to ask, if we do that, which council would want us to do, then the time, I don't know when the next meeting, and so...
The earliest we could have it on an agenda for a second reading would be in August, which would be after that HRC meeting.
Our next meeting is the Thursday of July.
There you go, that's what I was, because I wasn't necessarily...
So, that would give them an opportunity to take a look at it, to respond, to get information to us before we looked at it at a second reading, and then we could decide what to do with that information at that point. All right, yes.
A clarification maybe for Ron and I, as I'm hearing the consensus of moving forward, I'm here, right now, the language that we would put on is the language that you see tonight, and what we'd probably do is strip out some of the notes and all that kind of stuff, and we would put it more in a format where it's like, okay, this would be the language, because really, they're both brand-new documents, so we would just present it as, here's the language.
I like the idea of it coming as, here's the language, but I do also like the editorial comments that are in there as well, maybe in a separate document that's included, because I think that's helpful, both to be able to look at the blue language and say, this is new from what we had before.
Maybe we'll have two documents, but they'll, in effect, almost like the red line document, even though there's not.
Yeah, exactly.
So, could I just get a little clarification on the process?
Sure.
So, would that mean that the ordinance would be on next week as first reading, and the policy would just be an agenda item? How is that, how, is that...
We have not decided, we have not decided whether an ordinance is going to be passed yet, and that's what I was saying earlier, is that it would be a potential of a first reading, if in fact that gets passed, just like every first reading, you pass it first, and then eighteen, what is it, eighteen-one, somewhere down toward the end of the agenda, that's your first reading, so it would really be nothing different if that passes at that point.
Any other comments, questions?
One more question for Ron. Ron, so recently, the Supreme Court has defined sex, correct? What that means. They've also, in case law, defined religion. So, in that, the question to you is, why are we breaking out specifically all aspects of sex within this ordinance versus just saying the word sex? And I just want to, on one point, just clarification, why we're doing that, I know there's a difference between the Elliott Larson and the Civil Rights, how they interpret it and how they're enforcing it, and the Supreme Court's interpreted, so I just wanted to hear from you what that is.
Yeah, well, the starting point of the answer is that the Department of Civil Rights had broke those definitions out to include in the model ordinance. The Supreme Court made its decision on defining sex, and the all that the Supreme Court, all that you can say the Supreme Court decided was the exact facts that were before it. There are three cases before it, if I remember right, there was one case from Michigan, and I think that was a person who was transgender, and was, at least asserted that the person was terminated because they were transgender. The other two cases, if I remember right, are both cases where they were gay employees and asserted that they were terminated because of that, and that's all the Supreme Court decided, that those people were included in, those situations were included in the definition of sex, as they would define it. Now, what they mean beyond that is still an open question, and so the definitions there are an attempt to define what is meant by gender identity, sexual orientation, so forth.
You're good with that? All right, yep. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Van Beek.
So, perhaps against my better judgment, I feel a response, I feel a responsibility that the one area in here in my report that I talked about, that there was perhaps an administrative recommendation, is the section about referring. There has been some discussion, and I totally understand where there's a lack of clarity. Having definitions is helpful, but you see that a little bit ago, I walked over and I talked to Ron, if we define something that otherwise isn't defined at a higher level of government, particularly at the state level, then if we make our own definition, then we run a much higher probability that we are not going to be able to refer it to someone else to investigate, and it's then going to be returned back to us. Now, I want to make clear, if that's the decision council makes as a policy matter, we will do that, and we will work through and make those definitions, but I feel like I wouldn't be doing my job either in saying that there is a consequence, I think there is a legitimate consequence to that, that then, quite frankly, we are going to be the ones that investigate it, that then we won't have the remedies available to us, because it would only be investigated by us and charged by us with the enforcement penalties that we have, and quite frankly, then we have a greater probability also of experiencing that we'd go through the litigation process. So, against my better judgment, but yet I felt the responsibility where, because we've done a lot of investigation in that, that referral section was very key to what we presented and why it was in the Department of Civil Rights, so while I understand wanting to define, there is kind of a give and take there.
So, what you're saying, just because I like to reinterpret what you say, there's an advantage to using known building blocks, I use a lot of automobile repair analogies, rather than building our own carbureator from scratch, we're probably better off using a carbureator that's known and known how it works, and other people know how to fix it, rather than trying to build something completely on our own.
I want to be clear, where there is a policy choice here that you all can make, but there are implications, and I want to make sure that you understand those implications.
Very understood, so I'm going to make a suggestion then, where your definitions differ from the state, put that in a different color. You've got blue already, we need to know what those specific words are, and if they are important enough for us to fight that battle.
I'm going to let Ron answer that question, because I think basically, he's already done that, I think, the best way that we can, and Ron, just to make that clear, and maybe I'm unclear on that, but go through that one more time if you would.
The definitions that are in there, other than the definition of the department, the other three or four definitions there are from the Department of Civil Rights, so we would be consistent with them.
So, all your adjectives in blue are part of the Department of, yeah, that department?
Yeah.
Discrimination?
Yeah, the definitions there, the definitions, starting with discriminate, through the end of that section, those four definitions are all from the Department of Civil Rights.
Okay, and disability, education, familiar status, yada, 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 that's all part of their language?
It is, the reason why there's blue there is because it's not part of our current ordinance, opposing ordinance.
Those other definitions, maybe to just be clear, and this is maybe to clarify it with me, Ron, those other that are in blue are defined in the Elliott Larson Act or otherwise in the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, so the only reason that sexual orientation, gender expression, and gender identity is because it's not necessarily defined in the Elliott Larson's Act, but we're using the definition that the Michigan Department of Civil Rights uses, which we feel is wise, because then theoretically, to the greatest degree possible, we know that if we refer it to them, they will take it, because we're using the same definition that they use.
I'm 100% with you, Keith, I really am, if this is the way it's going to go, that's why I want to know where we differ in our verbiage here, if we go with this ordinance, where do we differ that's going to put that liability out there, that we're going to have to say, okay, is it worth it to us for this specific word or that specific word?
And I sense that maybe that was not completely, so I just wanted to bring a point to that, so...
We can make a red-line version that shows the exact differences between their model ordinance and this, that could be helpful, yes.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, Quincy.
I guess that'll help my question, but I wanted to know about those four sections that I referenced, the early twenty-five dash six to nine, if those, because those are not in blue, but they also say that this section is new, if that came from that same document, or if that was added by you, I guess.
The red-line version will show it exactly, but just looking back at it, we're talking about twenty-five, six...
Seven, eight, nine.
Yeah.
Yes, six, seven, eight, nine.
So, Ron, some of this is, we're almost comparing it to two documents, Quincy, which is interesting, some of it is, it might be new, because it's new compared to the housing ordinance that we have in place right now, so, but then, but then, at the same time, we're kind of talking about, well, is this in the Michigan, in the model ordinance or not? So, we will figure out a way to, as clearly as possible, communicate what's new compared to what we have in our housing ordinance, or in our protections against discriminations today as a city, as to what's compared to the model ordinance of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights.
Sounds good.
And I don't think we're going to be able to do that in one document, it's probably too much going on, so I'm sure Ron is smarter than I, and he'll be able to figure out how to do that really well. And he's smiling right now, he's just covered by a mask.
I just can't tell. Yeah, we'll be able to actually do that in one document to show you the changes that are red-lined there, and it'd be better to do that than to have me try to guess again what we changed and what we didn't, because as I'm looking, I think there are a couple sections that are in a different position than in the model ordinance even, so, yeah, let me get that for you for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, Scott.
I'm sorry I'm laboring this, but so Elliott Larson determines sex, and it's interpreted by the Civil Rights Commission what that means.
Correct.
So, but it doesn't, it's not equated to that of the Supreme Court, it doesn't equal, because it's interpreted two different ways, by the Supreme Court and the Civil Rights Commission, which is not law, it's just a commission who's interpreting it.
Correct, it's, the same term is used, both the federal statute and the state statute prohibit discrimination based on sex, there is some, you know, some definition in there, because it talks about some things like pregnancy and so forth, but the same word, operative term is used in both statutes, the Supreme Court is only, was only interpreting the federal statute when it made its interpretation. Now, why would the same word be treated differently in the state versus federal? Anyone's guess if a court's going to say that or not, I tend to think not.
So, our goal, our goal is, if someone violates our ordinance, is to push it to the Civil Rights Commission, correct?
Yes.
For prosecution, or, you know, for them to prosecute, at least push forward investigation of potentially the state prosecution of Elliott Larson Act. So, why do we have a civil infraction and/or criminal penalty applied to ours, if we move it to them and they determine it to be invalid, what's the necessity for us to continue on with anything more than what? I just, I'm trying to figure out why we're having penalties applied here at the local level, I just want to understand it, I just want to understand it first before we move forward.
Yeah, well, certainly, we could eliminate that, but the reason why it would be there is that, two things, one is, it's always hard to project out, when you're looking at this, what all the violations might be that come in, okay? So, if we have a complaint that's a violation of our ordinance, and it happens to be something that's sort of in the gaps and not covered by the state statute, but is covered by our ordinance, that's where civil infraction could come into play. It also could come into play if it's a situation where the Department of Civil Rights say, well, you know, we only will pursue action above a certain threshold, and this is below our threshold, so we're not going to act on it, even though it's a valid complaint. That would be another gap that this would fill in.
And that's why, when I talk about religious institutions and having a little bit more understanding what that definition is, I think is imperative, because now we're up against prosecuting on our own.
Yeah.
Because they didn't want to take it up. It's the same way with organizations, I can't remember what they exactly call it, but non-profit, or can't remember the exact name, but, so that's where I think a little bit more teeth in that, you know, how that's defined, because if we're going to end up prosecuting, we better know what we're talking about. And I keep hearing that from a number of people who've read this and said, what is it exactly we're talking about when we say religious institutions? Are we providing enough protection for our, I know we have the First Amendment there, but I still think we should have something a little bit more in that section.
Any other questions, comments? Great, thank you, Keith, there was another business item on there, any other business that you want to do at this point?
No, sir.
All right, it's, yes, Mr. Duthuy.
Before we totally wrap up, Ron, Keith, you had an insurmountable task here, throw the COVID in there, you guys did a yeoman's job, I appreciate the, personally, I appreciate the options that we have, we may not agree on them, but that's part of the democratic process. You listened to what we said, you listened to comments that we had, and you drafted the ordinances and the policy for us to make the final decision on, so you did exactly what was asked, you did not make a recommendation, you gave us some options, and I think either document here, we should be proud of, so thank you both very much, and the rest of the staff that got in on this, I know that the young lady sitting in the back there is going to have a lot more work on her hands here pretty quick, but I do personally appreciate the work that's gone into this.
Well said.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned.